Attended by the board members. When I call your name, please respond "present." For the record, George King. All right. Shannon Minaco.
Present.
Thank you. Christine Caselia. All right. Jerry Stevens.
Present.
David Ferris.
Here.
Jeff Falcino. All right. Nick Kapoor.
I just let Jeff in. He should be catching up to audio now.
Okay. And I see Christine is here too. Christine, are you here?
Yeah, can you not hear me?
Nope, I can. Thank you.
Christine has to stand in like one spot in her house, I think, to be heard. She doesn't have the best service here, I think.
Okay. And Jeff, are you on now? Okay, well, I see Jeff, so I'm gonna assume he's there.
Hear me?
Yep. Nick Kapoor.
Present.
And Alan Bagleybella.
Present.
All right. I'm not gonna do that for the rest of the staff. A copy of the agenda and any related materials has been posted and can be found on the Monroe Board of Education website, which is www.menroe.pf.org for public inspection. This public meeting is being conducted remotely in compliance with Section 1 of Governor Lamont's Executive Order Number 7B dated March 14, 2020, using Zoom electronic conferencing technology. Using this technology, the public shall participate in real time in this meeting via computer, tablet, or smartphone using the access information set forth on the meeting agenda. Please take note of the following regarding this remote electronic public meeting. This meeting is being conducted in real time. That this meeting is open to the public. That any member of the public may listen or view this meeting anonymously. That this meeting is being recorded. And while we ask that you mute your microphones unless recognized to speak, that anything you do say, do or display on your screen may become part of the recording. And that the recording shall be posted to the Board of Education website within seven days. The meeting shall follow standard parliamentary procedures. However, I ask all participants to follow these special rules in addition. Please mute your microphones to reduce background noise at any time you are not speaking. Prior to speaking, on each occasion, each speaker shall clearly state their name and title for the record. The use of the chat feature is prohibited and will not be considered during this meeting, if in use. And as set forth on the agenda, this meeting will feature public participation. Now, for the first item on the agenda, before we do so, to cover some ground rules for this remote meeting and to ensure effective and clear conduct of the business and to ensure accurate recording, I, the chair, will introduce each matter on the agenda. If a vote is anticipated, I will ask for a motion in a second. After induction of the matter and upon motion, I will invite each member by name for discussion. After all the members have had an opportunity to speak for the first time, I will repeat the invite to each member in the same order until there is no further comment. Please hold your comments until all are recognized. Everyone will have equal opportunity to speak. At the conclusion of the discussion, I will call a vote on the motion, if applicable, or take any other action to include each matter on the agenda. All votes taken in this meeting will be conducted by roll call. Remember to mute your phone or computer when you're not speaking. Please also remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate an accurate recording of the minutes. So the first item is report of the chairman. I really don't have much. I'm sure I will be jumping in when we get to the report of the superintendent. Sorry, excuse me, that's children in the household turning on and off lights. You know, with discussion with a couple of the items, so I will hold my discussion until then. So the first item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to the consent agenda as?
I'm moved.
Thank you, Shannon. Do I have a second?
Aye.
Thank you, Jerry. Discussion. Is George King on yet?
I am.
Okay, George. Any comments on the consent agenda?
No.
Shannon?
No.
Christine?
No.
Jeff? All right. Jerry?
No.
Nick?
No.
Alan?
All set.
And Christine. Did I say Christine? No, David. I missed David, sorry.
No.
Okay. All in favor, if you say aye. George?
Aye.
Shannon?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Jerry?
Aye.
Nick?
Aye.
Alan?
Aye.
Jeff? And Christine?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes. We will move on to reports of our committees and liaisons. We do not have our massive board reps here this evening since last week was April break. Sorry, I blanked out for a second what we were on last week. But does any of our other board members have any committed reports? George?
No.
Shannon?
No.
Jerry?
No.
Nick?
No.
Alan?
No.
David?
No.
Jeff? And Christine?
No.
Joe, did you have anything?
Not for reports of committees, no.
Okay. All right, we will move on to public participation. If there's any members of the public who wish to speak during public participation, please announce yourself by name and address one at a time. Once I've made a list of all the public participants, I will call on each of you by name, and you will be afforded three minutes for any comments. Thank you. Anybody would like to speak during public participation? All right. Going once, going twice, going three times. We will move on then. We will move on to our report of our acting superintendent, and Joe, you are up.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much. I am recording this. I think Bob's having some trouble recording it, so hopefully, hopefully, we're okay. I think Bob's getting it up and ready to get recorded from this point on. But just want to give everyone some updates in our distance learning. First, I want to just talk about the schedule for a second, and I want to clarify some misinformation that was swirling around on social media today. And I know Jake already sent an email about this. At the last meeting, we talked about schools offering some flexibility with their schedules as we continue on with distance learning. This is very much in line with what's going on at other schools around the state. As you know, even from these meetings, our Board of Ed meetings, the remote aspect of our interim learning plan makes everything much more time consuming than if we were meeting in person. In order to help facilitate more meaningful dialogue between students and teachers, the high school is gonna move to four one-hour sessions on alternating dates to meet all eight periods. As you may recall, we were gonna pilot the block schedule this year with the projected implementation for the 2021-22 school year. This is not the block schedule that they're putting in, nor is it a pilot for the block schedule. I just want to make that really clear for people. This is just an opportunity to allow students and teachers to more meaningfully engage in classroom instruction and give them a little bit of extra time to be able to do so. There's also, I just wanted to clear up another misconception that floated around today. Someone's asking to come into the meeting. Another misconception that Wednesdays are days off, and that's not true. Students will have work completed on Wednesdays while teachers are engaged in professional development to leverage technology to best meet the needs of their classes. For example, this Monday, there will be a whole bunch of professional development offerings for teachers. We have, we have a group, I'm sorry, one of the tech integrators is running a session on Jamboard, which is an interactive whiteboard for teachers to be able to use. We have professional development on Screencastify, which is a platform that allows you to make videos to share with students. There's another one on Flipgrid, which is a similar platform that allows you to make videos for kids, but it also allows the teachers to leave prompts for the students and then allow the students to respond to those prompts on that platform. Other things like Zoom, Google Hangouts, Google Meet. We're doing a lot of professional development with our paraeducators on Google Classroom Basics, so they can help support the classroom teachers. And, you know, on top of all that, there's gonna be some major curriculum conversations going around on these next four Wednesdays. We've learned a lot in these three weeks that we started with distance learning, and, you know, this time is gonna be very important. So I just wanted to make sure that was cleared up, because there seemed to be some confusion on that.
Joe, sorry, Joe, what was the first one?
The first one was Jamboard, which is an interactive whiteboard. So it's kind of like your screen becomes a whiteboard, and you can write right on your screen for kids.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other questions on that before I continue on?
George, did you have anything else?
No, just to clarify, that's all.
Okay. Shannon?
No.
Okay. Jerry?
No.
Nick? Alan?
No.
David?
No.
Christine?
No.
And I just got a text from Jeff that he's sorry, his computer just crashed, and he's trying to reboot and log back on.
Keep an eye, keep an eye on him.
Yeah, we'll keep an eye on him. All right, Joe, so continue on.
Okay. Wanted, like a follow-up on some of the conversation that we had last week about the governor's executive orders, as you recall. We had, the governor started with Executive Order 7. I think by the last meeting, we covered up to Executive Order 7R, which was the executive order that required negotiating the transportation contracts and the special education contracts. Since that, since our last meeting, remember, it went 7, 7A, 7B, 7C, and so on, we're now at 7BB. So, and I'll just touch on a couple of the executive orders that are impactful to boards of education. The first one is, the first one was Executive Order 7S. Let me start with the second part of this one. Executive Order 7S is the executive order that, basically, the second vote, their suspension of in-person voting for fiscal deadlines. This is basically the executive order that waives the referendum. So there won't be a referendum. The Board of Finance will set the referendum, I'm sorry, the Board of Finance will set the budget for the 2021 year. This one is also really important for this next piece, and we talked about this at the Board of Finance meeting the other day, and that's about addressing municipal tax deadlines and offering collection relief for people. So there's two options that a town can do. The concern is going into, the concern is going into next year that, okay, the concern is going into next year, that there's gonna be an issue with collecting taxes. There's a pretty significant concern about, you know, what's gonna be left when, you know, we are finally able to reopen the state and reopen the town? And, you know, what's the state of our, the town businesses as well as households gonna be? Obviously, we get our taxes from property taxes and from the businesses in town, and there's a concern that some of those businesses, quite frankly, might not be there if they weren't able to weather this storm. So the Executive Order 7S gave towns two options to choose from. The first one is a deferral program, which basically says that the town can defer tax collection for 90 days. So rather than taxes being due on July 1, they can, you can defer them for 90 days, so that would be October 1. The only thing someone would have to do to attest to that or qualify for that deferral program is to attest that there was some kind of an impact caused by COVID-19. I think it would be difficult to, I think it would be difficult to find a situation that has not been impacted by COVID-19. I think that that would pretty much apply to any. So there's this one program of, you know, a possible deferral of 90 days. The second program is a low interest rate program, and that is reducing the interest on late payments from 18% to 3% per year. So basically, what that would mean is if you were late a month or two months, it would be a quarter of a percent late fee on the collection. Just so, just so everybody here is on the same page, at the Board of Finance meeting, the preference was to move to this low interest rate program. The concern with the deferral program, quite frankly, was that if we defer taxes till October 1, the concern is that we will run out of cash in about six to eight weeks, and we won't have money left come October 1. This is also very important as it relates to our budget. The Board of Finance, the other day, you know, talked about, is there gonna be the one setting the mill rate and the budget for the year? Has discussed the idea of going out with a 0% tax increase. And this doesn't necessarily mean a 0% budget, but what it does require is that the town dip into its unassigned fund balance. And the Board of Finance, in, you know, the kind of the three parts of this program, you know, the three pieces that the Board of Finance outlined the other day would be, number one, that the, that the town would use all but $2 million of the unassigned fund balance. And I don't know what the exact amount is in that account right now. I believe it's somewhere around $10 million. So you're looking at using about 80% of that account, or about $8 million, to help defray the possible loss of revenue generated from the lack of tax collection. So one piece of it is using the unassigned fund balance up to, you know, $1 billion. The second piece of it is to defer all capital expenditures for the year. This will have an impact on us, because a lot of our technology was embedded in some of that, in those capital expenditure plans, some of those plans that Falkor thought about. The third, the third part of the proposal was a request by the Board of Finance chair to, for myself and for First Lieutenant Kella, to reach out to our unions and to ask them to defer raises for one year. So that, I think, is all kind of lumped in to this executive order, which makes this one pretty significant for us. Do you want me to stop for a second before I go about the other ones? Because I just threw a lot at you, and I know there's a lot there that has to.
Yeah, let's stop there, because I'm sure some people will have questions. If I can also just go along with that, in addition to that, they're gonna be working on lowering the revenues for the town. So they are going to be lowering the collection rate, and they're also gonna be taking down revenues such as Parks and Rec revenue, any revenues that come in or, you know, you know, are in the Buildings Department, that type of stuff, because there is a concern, especially with Parks and Rec, that a lot of their programs are probably not gonna be able to run. So that's also a part of it too, where you say, why are they taking so much out of the undesignedated fund balance? How does that not cover everything? Well, they're looking at, and that's where they're not 100% positive yet, because they still have to work through it all, but lowering the collection rate down seriously reduces revenue and also, like I said, reducing the revenue.
So they're lowering the revenue expectations, right?
They are. That's correct. And, but what that is, but what that amount is, they have not yet determined. That is what they're gonna be determining in the next couple of weeks during their meetings. Ron, did I miss anything there?
That's usually my line.
Sorry about that. I was hitting the wrong button to unmute myself. No, you covered pretty much all of it. I mean, a lot of it is, is they don't have anything to model this after. That's the real issue here. So they're making some educated guesses on the, they're gonna have to on the revenue end, from a collection rate standpoint and modeling the revenue, other revenues outside of the tax revenues. I mean, it's, you know, it's a tough situation, unfortunately.
Right. And I missed interest income too. Like, they're gonna adjust that down also, because we just won't be making the same, you know, interest. But again, as Ron said, you know, they're still trying to figure out what those specific criteria they're gonna use to determine how much to bring it down at this point. So why don't we go through? George, do you have any questions for Joe on this and the Board of Finance and where we are right now with current, with next year budget?
So what are the next steps? What's our next discussions on this?
I think the first piece that Ron and I are trying to figure out is, what exactly is the salary increase next year? The ask has been for, you know, for a freeze in salaries from this year to next year. So I think our next piece, that the piece that Ron and I and Donna and Mike and Joe were talking about the other day is, how much money is exactly that we're talking about?
George, anything else?
No, not yet.
Okay. Shannon?
No. No, not this term.
Okay. Jerry?
Yeah, a few things, unfortunately. So to get to zero, Joe and Ron, what's our cut? Give me a figure.
So I don't, I don't know yet, Jerry. So the question isn't necessarily, and this is one of the pieces that I think we're trying to figure out now. It's not necessarily to get to a 0% budget, it was to get to a 0% tax increase and use that unassigned fund balance to mitigate some of that.
Understood.
So I think, you know, roughly, we're looking at about $700,000, Ron.
Okay, so just so I can throw this out there to whoever's on, you already took a $500,000 cut, then another $500,000 cut, now we're talking about a $700,000 cut. Yes?
Oh, can I, yeah. Jerry, you're talking an additional cut on top of the $1 million?
Yes.
Yeah, I don't think that's been determined yet, because that, a lot of that's gonna be predicated on how the numbers fall out, quite frankly.
You just eased me.
The revenue numbers are gonna drive a lot of that.
And then Joe and Ron, I don't mean to cause trouble, but I'm going to, I'm a little hot right now. Why did the Board of Finance, in your infinite wisdom, ask you to ask the teachers? Have we asked the Department of Public Works? Have we asked the police officers? Have we asked everyone else?
It's everybody across.
It's everybody, everybody.
Across the board. Okay.
Across the board. All Board of Education, and all town people, it's everybody.
Thank you. I'm eased again. Awesome.
Yeah. I was just gonna say something, but I just lost my train of thought. Yeah, so Jerry, what they're doing, and just so that the board knows, we had a conference call on Friday afternoon, Joe, Ron, Linda, Maria, and Val, about we're gonna have, the finance team is gonna start putting in, even though we have not voted on them officially, all the adjustments to, especially the 1,000 accounts, because we're going to need to figure out what the 1,000 salary increase is to tell the Board of Finance. So they're gonna start, they're starting to make this week those changes, even though we haven't voted on it yet, so they can figure out from that adjustment list what the actual increase is at this point, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Nick, we'll go to you next.
Okay. So, Ron, the first question I have is the Executive Order 7S, the deferral program, is it, is the deferral program 90 days? Is that the only option, or is it up to 90 days? Is it 90 days or nothing?
That's my understanding, Nick. It's 90 days or nothing. And the options are, they can, we can do one program, the other, or both. I believe those are the only options. And it is up to, it's an additional 60 days deferral on top of the 30 days you get already. In other words, tax payments are due July 1. You have until the end of July to make the payment. Now it's an additional 60 days on top of that deferral.
Yeah, that's unfortunate. If it was up to 90 days, municipalities would have room, but that's besides the point. Another question I had was, in the pre-COVID budget that we discussed at the Board of, on, from the town side, the budget proposal had $1.5 million on the revenue side from the unassigned balance for the insurance runout, correct? So when we're talking about bringing the unassigned balance down to $2 million, is the 1.5 for the BOE insurance runout already taken out of that?
It would be included in that. I mean, that's gotta be, that's part of the equation, because that's gotta be the deficit fund balance and the medical reserve fund needs to be taken care of. So that'll be taken care of as part of the assignment of the fund balance.
The only, the only thing that concerns me about the unassigned balance and bringing it down so low, everyone's been saying bond rating, bond rating. What, when you're not bonding, I mean, I know the bond rating is a measure of the fiscal strength of an organization, especially municipality, but if you're not, if you're gonna push all capital projects off, then that's one thing. But my only concern is, what if coronavirus rears its ugly head again in the fall? And we are three or four or five months into a fiscal year, and we have to close again? God willing, this doesn't happen, and then things start to snowball again. We're in the middle of a fiscal year, and the unassigned balance is now down to a place where it might not be able to help us. I'm not saying I have a solution, but bringing the undesignedated balance all the way down to a place where I don't even know if it's one or two months of operating is a pretty scary prospect for me. That's really just a comment. And the last thing, the other, the last comment I'll make for now is that, and I don't know if this changed the last Board of Finance meeting, but the Board of Finance was talking about May 14th as the date that they were gonna have their second public hearing and then vote. So I don't, I know, I think we have one more board meeting before then, but, you know, I know Jerry just tried to get a number out of someone, and, you know, the number is floating. I just hope that, you know, it's really hard when I'm getting, you know, text messages and messages from different areas, people saying, what's the next cut? How much more? What are you cutting next? I know things are changing by the hour, but I just, I know this is a crisis, but we're talking about the whole 12 months, we're talking about the whole next year, and we have to, we have to conserve the cash like everybody's doing. I'm very concerned about bringing the undesignedated fund balance down to where it is, but then, if I say that, then I have to propose cuts, because if revenue's gonna be brought down 10%, and if you wanna keep the rainy day fund up, you have to cut from somewhere. So it's a really hard decision. I just hope that as things move along, that there's open lines of communication. So that's all for now. Thank you.
Yeah, but where are we hearing that it's changing and we're needing to cut by the hour? Where is that coming from?
No, every, every week that the Board of Finance meets, the things are changing in society by the hour. Things are changing, the news alerts are coming by the hour, things are changing. So it's changing weekly at the Board of Finance meetings, because every other day, the governor's putting out a new executive order, and there's a new thing in there that municipalities, they're gonna have to go.
So I get that, but what does that mean for us? Ron, so what's our level of, I guess, what's our, do we have stability?
Wait, wait, hold on. George, can I just say that's George King asking the question?
Yeah, sorry. Yes, that's George King asking a question. Ron, what kind of stability do we have here where? Yeah, sorry, yes, that's George King asking a question. Ron, what kind of stability do we have here where we can, we can, we can plan our, our finances in accordance with what the town and the, the finance board are, are doing? I guess, to, to, I don't want, you know, I, I don't want Nick's concerns to be, i- if, if Nick's concerns are valid, then we really need to address them. If they're not, then let's, uh, let's figure that out, please. Let's say this.
So this is Ron Bedofsky, Director of Finance. George, I, I think Nick's concerns are valid. I, I unfortunately don't have a crystal ball. I think, I think the Board of Finance's opinion is, it's, the rainy day fund is for a rainy day and it's pouring right now. So to try to get a budget passed that the taxpayers, e- even, even though the taxpayers of the town of Monroe aren't voting on it this year, I think the fiduciary responsibility the Board of Finance has is, is to, you know, certainly pass a budget that they feel is, is fiscally responsible. And under the circumstances, that's hard to, uh, it is hard to get your hands around, because there are so many unknowns. And I think what they're trying to craft is a, is a budget by, by utilizing the fund balance that's available without utilizing it all to, to get a responsible budget passed under the circumstances. Without really knowing what the collection rate's gonna be. Usually, uh, what's modeled in the mill rate calculation, calculation is a 99% tax collection rate. We know that's not gonna happen likely next year. And if, if it does happen, then, then we're, you know, you know, the, the, the problem is, isn't whether the 99% is gonna happen, it's whether, you know, what's the right number? Is it 95%? Is it 90%? If they're, if they model the mill rate calculation with a 90% collection rate, and we do better than that, then we're, we'll be okay. If, if we don't hit that, we'll be, we'll have to dip into fund balance further. And, and I think if, if we're in that position, there will be a lot of other municipalities throughout the state and country that are in as bad, if not a worse, situation. So I don't think we'd be alone there. I mean, that's, that's the best answer I can give under the circumstances.
Thank you. Nick, were you done, or did you have another question?
I'm all set, thank you.
All right, Alan, it's your turn.
So we're looking at a cut of about 1.7 right now? Approximately.
We, we're not looking at a, well, a cut of anything at this point. We're just, what we're in the process of doing is trying to, is, like I said, they're asked, they're still unsure of what the actual number is until they start rolling up the different scenarios of what is gonna be the collection rate, what are they taking down revenue by? I, I, again, they're looking, like, like Joe said, they're asking if all the, both the town and Board of Ed, if all the employees defer raises, so hopefully there would not be a cut to anything else, but that would, by deferring that a year, that hopefully would cover everything that is needed to get to a 0% tax increase. But again, that's gonna need, and Ron, correct me if I'm wrong, that's gonna need to be determined and played out once we have uploaded everything, figure out what the actual real increase for the board is, at least. And then the Board of Finance figuring out what all those revenues and collections are and what they're comfortable taking it down to. And I think that's gonna be a work in progress, because there is no, there isn't, you know, no formula to do that. They're gonna have to be kind of picking and choosing and trying to figure that out.
That, that's correct, and, and I do know they're, they're gonna be looking at other things on the municipal side also. It's not just, you know, confined to the Board of Ed side. You know, they're gonna be looking at, you know, with capital projects, they're gonna be looking at, at roads and, and trying to use sources of funds outside the budget if, if possible.
Thank you.
Anything else, Alan?
No, that's it, thanks.
David?
Thank you, Don. It's Dave Ferris, Board of Education member. Just a couple of things for Joe and Ron. In those calculations, we also have to figure out retirements, open positions, any other savings that we've had. My two questions are, have you come across any new costs with this issue? And number two, has anyone looked into if we can borrow from either of our pension accounts? Although I know they're down with the market, but just something to look at.
Yeah, I think the first, the first piece that you, the first pe, the first question, Dave, is a, is a good one. Just in terms of retirement positions, I think one of the things we're, we're gonna have to do now that, you know, we have two $500,000 reductions, and before we get into, you know, what this, you know, what this next step is gonna be, I think one of the things we're gonna have to do is go in and start putting some of those reductions that we've already talked about, start putting them into munis and, you know, getting, you know, completely solid numbers moving forward. I think we, we need to do that. You know, if we get to a, a position where we wanna switch things, you know, you know, later on down the line, we can still do that. But I think now, you know, as you're starting to head up, and it would be good to get as, as hard a numbers in there as possible. As for the pensions, I'd have to, I'd have to defer to Ron on that. I don't, I don't think that's, I don't know if we'd be able to do that.
Yeah, so regarding borrowing from the pensions, Dave, it, it's a possibility. I, I haven't checked into it, I don't think anyone's checked into it. What we have looked into, which other municipalities are that don't have a, you know, a general fund to tap into, they're looking at tax anticipation notes. We would, and, and we've, I have discussed that with the town's independent financial advisor that we use for bond issues. Really what the rating agencies would like you to do is utilize your fund balance first before you went that route. So that, that is an option. If we find our collections are, are down and we're having an issue paying our bills come, come next year, that, that's, that would be an option, tax anticipation notes before, I would say, to borrow against the pension.
Yeah, I would agree. It's, it's a last option, but all, all of these are, all of these are, are last options, everything that we're looking at here. Have you come across any new costs, unanticipated costs with this, with closing schools and, and, and what's going on?
You know, there haven't been any really huge costs. The one I was gonna talk about a little bit, and I'll talk more about it in a few minutes, but the, the, the school lunch program is costing us some, some, some money, about $1,800 a week. We have had to make some, you know, technology software purchases and whatnot. Ron and I, we're gonna talk a little bit later about, give you kind of a ballpark of where we are with transportation and some other areas where we see some savings. Obviously, obviously, you know, we're not calling up substitutes to come into the buildings. So there's some, there's some cost, cost savings there, transportation, a couple of other areas too. There's probably the biggest one I could think of right now is the, and it's not a big one, it's just is the, the lunch program right now, it's costing about $800.
Okay, thank you, Bill.
Thanks, David. Christine, do you have anything?
No.
And I see Jeff is back on. Jeff, do you have any questions?
No, David, I, I'll save my, my question regarding buses later when we get to it.
Okay, perfect. Did I miss anybody? I don't think so, right? All right. Joe, you can go on with the superintendent's report.
Okay, no problem. The other, the other executive orders were pretty cut and dry. 7X is the one that continues, the continued school closures until May 20th. I was surprised by that. I think we were all anticipating getting kind of a definite decision on that April 9th or 10th day, when the commissioner came on and the governor came on. But they've kicked the can down to May 20th and pulled out some hope here. This, one also does authorize the Commission of Education to defer requirements regarding certification testing. This is for our, if we have any teaching candidates out there, this is for their practice exams. And then the last one is, is kind of, this is the most recent one, at least it was the most recent one as of yesterday. And I think this one actually goes into effect 10 minutes ago. I think as of 8:00 PM tonight, the, the governor was asking that everyone wear cloth face coverings or some kind of protection, wherever the six-foot social distance could not be practiced. I think this is important for our folks who've been wearing gloves and masks all along, but as they're, as we're doing the food service program. But I think it also does speak to where we are as a, as a country right now, or, or as a state right now, and what that's gonna mean for the future. The second one is also important to us, because our, our schools are, are voting areas, and now we've, we've postponed the presidential primary to August 11th. All right, the next thing, I, I don't think there's anything, I don't know if anyone has any questions about that stuff. Those are pretty cut and dry, I don't think we need to go through everybody.
I think you can go on, I think you can go on, Joe, I think. That's pretty
The, the next thing I wanted to talk about was grading, and I'm really hopeful that, to generate a little dialogue here with you folks, get you know, get your input and also, you know, welcome the high school team to jump in whenever they want. I know they've been wrestling with this quite a bit. A couple of weeks ago, the state provided guidance on grading. The, the aspect that probably raises the most eyebrows around grades is the impact that it, that it may have on college applications and decisions. We've heard from all the colleges and universities in Connecticut, as well as a number of schools from around the country, and they've all said the same thing. They know that whatever we do with grades for the fourth quarter, whatever any school in this country does with grades in the fourth quarter, is going to be an anomaly. They know that these grades are, you know, for lack of better words, gonna have an asterisk next to them. You know, they're prepared for that, and I really don't think that any decision that a district makes is, is, is gonna hurt a student. You know, that's most important. You know, next year, colleges are gonna be forced to look more holistically at student applications than ever before. They, they know that the entire country is dealing with this. So the, this state offered guidance, and like so many other, other things in New England, we have 169 towns doing 169 different things. The state guidance was pretty simple. They just, they asked that districts adopt a locally guided pass/fail protocol. So this could, this could include just simple pass/fail incomplete options. In essence, students would, would still be numerically graded and receive a pass for anything that would traditionally earn them credit, you know, something above a 65, and conversely, a fail or an incomplete for anything below, below a 65. The rationale for the pass/fail is to take into account the inequities that exist between students and distance learnings. You know, we know that when kids are in school, they're provided a consistent lesson in a controlled setting, the classroom. We can't guarantee that in distance learning, that there are way more variables at play here. You know, we have to ask ourselves about the students with inconsistent Wi-Fi, unreliable technology, students with working parents who have to assume caretaking roles for the younger siblings. Or we know that we have, you know, some, some of our older students helping their younger brothers and sisters in their classes, because the parents are at work. We also have, you know, we have to concern ourselves with the students that have been affected by COVID-19, either in their immediate or extended family. We know that we've had families that have been impacted by this. And how much this impacts the kid's ability to focus on their schoolwork is, it's, it's tough to tell. So the question that we're, the question that we're, we're struggling with is how do we keep students engaged while also taking into, into account all the variables students may be experiencing? And one option that we've talked about is to add in with, you know, pass/fail, and this would just be, just so you understand too, this would just be for the fourth quarter. This is, it's important to understand that transcripts that go to colleges only have the final course average on it, they don't have the quarter grade on it. A lot of people think transcripts are all your report cards, everything else. It, it's not that, it's just the final course average in there. So, you know, as we talk about student engagement, one option is to, is to add a pass with distinction option for those students who go above and beyond during the fourth quarter. So under this plan, you know, student GPAs would be calculated based on the three quarters of work that they've completed, with credit being assigned at the conclusion of the fourth quarter. This would acknowledge that each student sitting in a different virtual classroom with different accesses, I'm sorry, with different access, different supports, different resources. It holds kids accountable for credit and still incentivizes them with the pass with distinction option. And, you know, I do think it could reduce stress, anxiety, and the isolation that kids are already feeling during all this uncertainty. The high school staff has looked at over 40 different districts, like I said, there's 169 towns in, in the state, and everybody seems to have their own different version. They looked at over 40 different districts, mostly in our DURG, in our area, in Fertile County. They communicated with our own teachers and the guidance staff, and they think that this is the most responsive plan for, for our community. We did have some concerns with our students who are taking classes through the University of Connecticut's Early College Experience Program. These are UConn classes taught by Massey teachers, where kids earn college credit. And we, we were concerned, because UConn initially said they would not accept a pass/fail option for the final grade, but they sent this in today. They, they sent some clarifying information, which is kind of makes us a little bit more comfortable. And again, this is, this is a conversation. I'm explaining this one, because the other alternatives are pretty simple to, to, to understand, and I'll, I'll, I'll note those at the end. But UConn sent to us today, this is just a direct quote from them, "It's become clear to us that most of the high schools are grading the fourth quarter on a pass/fail basis, and will be calculating the final student average based on the first three quarters and the pass for the fourth quarter." I would like to make it clear that employing this method of grading is acceptable for your UConn ECE classes as well. So in a nutshell, UConn's on board with, with that as well. Just to be clear and completely transparent, there are districts continuing with traditional grading. There are other districts that are doing a hybrid model, where students can choose to opt in for pass/fail or get a traditional grade by a certain date, usually around Memorial Day. It, it's all over the place. This was, you know, one of the places we figured we would start the conversation here. Now let folks jump in, and I would also encourage Jake and Anne and Julia and Mark to jump into if they're comfortable.
Well, why don't we start with Jake before we go to the board, because he may have other stuff to say before the board at once to ask some questions. So Jake, I'll let you give you the floor.
Am I muted now? Sorry about that. I mean, I'll be perfectly honest with you, Donna. I mean, I worked on the stuff with, with Joe. And so, you know, the, the comments that, that Joe made really reflect our, you know, our thoughts at the high school level. You know, I, you know, I think I would, I would echo strongly Joe's thoughts that, you know, we considered a lot of options, every single option out there, and communicated through phone calls and, and meetings and surveys with essentially every single school in, in DIRG A and, and in DIRG B, and any, any similar school, and really took into account our own community. I'm finding that when I'm contacting home and the other administrators would, I think, echoed this, that, you know, we, we have a lot of working families still in the realm. And, you know, we wanna be responsive to that, to our, to our community. And so, you know, we think that the best fit for our community would be a version of a, a pass/fail incomplete for quarter four, and giving grades based on, what, what the GPA based on quarter three, and keeping the credit for completing work through quarter four.
All right, so just so I understand, so for a, a child, their final grade will be the first three quarters computed, and then with just the pass/fail for the fourth, but their overall grade will just be the first three quarters, correct?
That's correct. The grade would be, the GPA would be based on first three quarters, but the credit would be withheld until they've completed the course this year, then we'd assign the credit at the end of the fourth quarter.
Okay, great, thank you. We will go to the board for discussion, George?
I, I got it, Donna. I'm good, thanks.
Thank you, Shannon?
Okay, so that's for what Jake and Joe just described, with the GPAs for the first three quarters and then pass/fail for the fourth quarter. That's for all Massey classes, right?
That's correct, Karen.
Okay, so since I have a bunch of kids, and I have a couple in UConn, and they're helping the younger kids, because it's beyond my and they're helping the younger kids because it's beyond my purview, but my high school kid. But the, for UConn, what I'm wondering is this. My kids have a choice in the class for, they can choose, I guess up until the last day, if they want a pass/fail grade or a grade-grade for their UConn classes. Does it make sense for us to implement that for the students in the UConn classes? And you don't have to answer me now, but is that something to think about?
No, but interestingly enough, it's interesting that, you know, they're basically, they basically told us that what we need to report to UConn, Jake, correct me if I'm wrong here, but what they need to report to UConn is the final course average. And they said that that final course average cannot be a pass/fail. So they're not giving high school students a pass/fail option, as I understand it. They are saying if you want to do pass/fail for the fourth quarter, that's fine, but whatever you send us, you need to send us an A-, a B+ and, you know, I'm not exactly how they report the grades back to them, but they're not saying, they're not giving our high school students, it sounds like, the same opportunity to choose whether or not they want a pass/fail or a grade.
And I know it's different because they have semesters and we have quarters, so it's not a perfectly level, you know, comparing apples to apples type of a thing. But do you think it would make sense for us, and is it even an option for, and right now, I'm just talking about kids at Massey taking UConn classes, that's all I'm talking about right here right now. Can they, for the fourth quarter, choose a number grade or a pass/fail grade like our UConn students can for the semester?
Yeah, I mean, essentially, the information that we have from UConn would certainly not preclude us from doing that, but what we got today said, you know, that they know schools are, you know, majority of schools are opting for pass/fail for quarter four. And it's okay that, you know, to do that as long as we're giving a year grade through quarter three. So I'm not seeing a vested, I'm not sure how that helps kids more, you know, to have one particular course that have a different grading system than all the other courses that we're using.
Jake, excuse me, I do remember, Shannon, an email about this, and maybe Ann remembers more clearly, that UConn did specifically tell us they were not extending that to high school students. So for our kids in UConn classes, we need to report to UConn a letter grade for the whole year, which is our plan, even with quarter four being pass incomplete, we would still get a letter grade and a GPA and a weighted GPA for our UConn students. But it seemed, last week's email from UConn was that they were not going to allow the high school kids to do that the way they do with the college kids.
Is that definitive?
Definitely not for a course. If you're referring to a quarter, yes. If you're referring to a course, if I misunderstood, I apologize. For the course, the answer is no. We cannot go pass/fail for a UConn course, but we can for the fourth quarter.
Right, I'm thinking like, if you worked extra hard, for lack of a better way to put it, if you were just, you know, working as hard as you possibly could, what's the incentive? Why are you, you know what I mean, like versus, how can I escape by with a pass/fail? What's the incentive, is there a way to do that? If they're not allowing us to give anything for the fourth quarter other than a pass/fail?
Can I just mention something here, Shannon?
Wait, hold on, Ann, can you just say?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Ann O'Doy, Secondary Instructional Leader, School Counselor, Department Chair. So what UConn has, so the UConn students, there will be a grade sent up to UConn on the UConn transcript. Okay, so even though we have a quarter four grade of a pass with distinction, a pass or a fail, there will be a final grade sent up to UConn.
For the first three quarters, yeah?
That's, well, for the whole year. Yeah, what we're saying is, and this might be something we still continue to hash out, we're saying that the first three quarters of the ECE-UConn grade that's finalized, okay, that grade is supposedly their final grade. Now, you know, I think what we can do as a high school is, you know, what if the kids, I think what you're saying is, okay, kids now get 100 on every assessment moving forward because those ECE classes are still being taught, there is still going to be a final exam, they're still trying to figure out that piece of it. You know, what if the grade at the end of this piece of it, and Jake, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, will they put those grades into that grade and it might elevate the grade that this student has now? Generally speaking, kids that are in these classes, generally speaking, are usually doing the same type of work on the same level, I hear what you're saying, from their quarter three grade to the quarter four grade. But I don't know, Jake, if you want to jump in about this piece of it as far as like, what's going up to UConn? Because I think they're giving those UConn instructors that are high school teachers some discretion as to their final grade and how they're computing it. I don't know if that's, I think it's opening the dialogue for a little discussion here, but it's really benefiting the students. What UConn has said is that they are opening up, a student can withdraw from the class all the way as an option, all the way to the end, which is not always the scenario. So they are giving that option to students if, for whatever reason, they can't maintain it.
And if they're struggling for whatever reason, if there's a sickness or in the family or just it's an overall anxiety.
Yes, they're going to say, yeah, they're going to say.
But I just wonder if there's a way to also, like, my kids were at UConn, if there's a way for these kids to still get a number grade for quarter four if it benefits them and then they can, I just wondered that.
I think part of what's going on for us with traditional grades versus pass/fail, and one reason where I see the benefits of the pass incomplete option is that we have students who previously, in the schoolhouse, were really high achieving students who are not engaged in distance learning for a variety of reasons, that are not the sort of kids you might think would be having problems with that. And we were able to generously pull taffy to get quarter three grades based on work that students had already done before we left the schoolhouse on March 13. And, you know, by not counting anything that people didn't turn in because it was the first couple of weeks of distance learning. But when I think of all the people, I've called all the big band of kids that are struggling to engage, now launching into quarter four without that previous work that we stood on in quarter three to help get kids through, I think that the, that having not traditional grades going on and teachers grading and the work progressing, but moving the whole building to pass/fail, I think it acknowledges the situation that we're all in and that, you know, we're no longer controlling the classroom. Our classroom just reached into 1,000 homes and.
I totally agree with you, Julia, I totally understand it. I'm not usually the one concerned about, I'm more of a whole student and a whole picture person than a number person for grades. That's usually almost, you know, how hard did you try means a lot more to me than, you know, what number did you bring home? I don't normally care, but I just want to make sure that they're still engaged, I guess.
Yeah, I think we do too. And I think, you know, Jake's message to everyone about a kid missing an assignment is to reach out with concern. And I think one of the reasons why this is taking so long is how much we're reaching out and working hard to engage with every single kid, whatever their problem is. And the personal touch and the phone calls and the Google Chat in the Google Classroom, it's been more effective than throwing in the zeros. You know, the social emotional piece of it is bigger than we thought.
Learning everything too, but I don't want them to disconnect either, like, to think that, you know. I didn't mean to take up this much time on it either. I just wondered if what they were doing there would apply here.
Yeah, if you have kids that are keeping up with it, then that's awesome. And we're just really, we're, it's, we're trying to make sure that we have an arrangement that doesn't hurt anybody and helps as many as we possibly can.
No, I appreciate that. Thank you.
All right. We will move on then, Jeff, do you have anything?
Yeah, I guess my concern, the one concern I would have is that students don't stay engaged because we go to a pass/fail. I'm not pretending like I have the answers here, but I would speak from my children's perspective and say, you know, the less accountability they have, the less they're going to get out of it. And that would be my concern. I understand the challenges that presents. And I guess a follow-up question I would have would be, how do you envision this quarter being, you know, specific to colleges, being evaluated over the course of someone's, you know, high school career? Is this going to be an anomaly that everybody's kind of in the same boat? Or, you know, you're going to have a pool of kids being graded on pass/fail, a pool of kids who for one quarter actually have letter grades? Is it going to be weighted differently? I mean, I guess that would be my question, whether it's more of a concern.
Yeah, two really good points, Jeff. The first one, yeah, I definitely think this is going to be an anomaly. And I think it is going to be all over the place. I think it's going to be, you're going to have people that are pass/fail, you're going to have people that go traditional grades. And, you know, as I said before, colleges are going to look at this and, you know, they're going to know it's, like I said, they're going to put asterisks next to, you know, this point in time. I'm sure, you know, part of the guidance from the state is to, you know, to have something on the transcript saying what you did at this time. And I think colleges, they're going to have to look more holistically at kids because it definitely, it's difficult enough for colleges to, you know, to do the process that they do when they get kids coming from Massey with a GPA that's out of a five-point system, a kid from Wilton whose GPA is out of a four-point system, a kid from Newtown whose GPA is out of a percentage. You know, they get like, your GPA is an 85%. So they already have to deal with all of these, all of this randomness as it is. And now they know, you know, it's to some extent, like I said, the, every Connecticut college and so far, every college that we've spoken to so far has said the same thing, that they're pretty much going to take this quarter with a grain of salt, knowing that, you know, kids, it was a difficult time for families and, you know, and rightfully so. People are all over the place throughout this country in this thing. Your other question about engagement is a good one, and that's the one that we, you know, we struggle with to try to make sure we keep kids engaged. It's why we have staff reaching out to people all the time. It was one of the ideas I like behind doing the pass/fail, pass incomplete, pass with distinction option, is to recognize those kids that do go above and beyond. And some of those kids who are intrinsically motivated, if they're going to do it for, if they're going to do it for an A or a B, they're going to do it for a pass with distinction as well. So we do give them that opportunity to stay engaged and be recognized for, you know, going above and beyond during this really trying time.
Yeah, Jake, yeah, Jeff, I completely agree. And, you know, the student engagement by far is, it's definitely on our minds. And one of the reasons I like the idea of moving to a pass/fail and incomplete is to give time for students to really get the work done because we really need to be responsive to what's happening, obviously, in our world, not just in our community. But I think the idea of moving away from traditional grades and letting teachers really respond to the kids in front of them. One of the things I'm very, very proud of over the past month is that a lot of feedback I'm getting from parents is that teachers are calling home, teachers are reaching out, teachers are emailing, they really are wrapping around kids. And I feel like if I could back off the traditional grades, the kids know they've got a grade, but they need, you know, they're working hard towards their credit. The teachers can be really responsive to exactly what's going on, really for each of their kids, and get through the curriculum as best they can up until the end of the year.
Hey, so this is George, quick follow-up. So my, I agree that this is the direction that we probably need to take. What about the eighth graders going into high school? And how did they get graded this year to place them into our schools? So we can control what we can control, right? We can't control what colleges do, but we can control what our high school does. So what's the path for the eighth graders going into high school? How will that be determined?
It's a really good question, George. One of the things we talked about just from the grading perspective, whatever we do at the high school, we can easily do at the middle school. You know, the importance of these Wednesdays, and I'll let Jack Cecchini jump in here at any point too, the importance of these Wednesdays is to really go over, you know, I talked about having some really critical curriculum conversations to really find out what's important, because the teachers are really going to have to call down, what is it that these kids, especially eighth graders, who are going to be going to the high school next year, especially in, you know, the math and the science classes, where a lot of that content is somewhat cumulative and word language to that end as well. So they're going to have to identify, what are the, you know, in educational language, you call them the power standards. What are the power standards we need to have and that these kids need to have in order to be successful in next year? So it's less of a grading question and more of a, you know, of an educational philosophy question about how we address, you know, how we address those things moving forward. What do we identify as the most important things that kids need to know and be able to do, you know, to make that transition from eighth grade to ninth grade? You know, I don't want to speak for, I don't want to speak for Kevin Welch, who I think's on here. But I know in some other, in another state, my niece lives up in Massachusetts, she's in eighth grade, she's taking algebra this year. She was scheduled to take geometry next year, and they told all the eighth graders, you're going to take algebra again. It's not a position I necessarily want to see us in. I would rather us, you know, identify what do they need to know and then have those, you know, teachers next year work on those skills, you know, to get them up to speed in the beginning of the year to keep them moving forward.
So I think that that's a big one, like math, span, or world language. What, how are we going to evaluate those kids to get them into the proper classes next year without a full six months of, you know, evaluation? How do we do that? And Joe, I completely agree with you. There's no way that we can say, repeat this. It's crazy. So how do we do that?
George, from a scheduling perspective, we're scheduling them to go on. And because it's across the board, we're asking the next year teachers to make accommodations in how the courses are taught next year. But I think that also speaks to, you know, the acknowledgement that quarter four, from a curriculum perspective, has had to look different because of the way we're delivering it. I think I have an even closer up view of it in the fine arts. I think Mark would say too, from CTE, any of these hands-on classes, you know, they're really teaching different curriculum. They've had to scramble, and these ensemble performance music classes are now sort of music technique classes. Definitely a different evolution than what the kids signed up for. So grading it with a pass/fail and picking it up in the next level next year makes sense for a lot of different departments.
Yeah, George, a lot of the, you know, a lot of those decisions have already been made too. Like Julia said, the scheduling process is well underway. So, you know, we will really rely on, you know, in order to be placed into a lot of the classes from the eighth to ninth transition, require teacher recommendations. And I imagine those conversations will still continue. And those recommendations are going to become even more important. And we will have conversation if, you know, we find that there's specific areas that we need to make sure that we're hitting, but teachers will address those with those kids. You know, I don't know if, if Jack Cecchini, if you want to jump in, if you're comfortable with that.
Thanks, Joe. Yeah, I'd be happy. We have an unusual advantage that, you know, that the board acted on, you know, that's become so positive for our district, and that is our ILs, Secondary Instructional Leaders and the work they do with our. And that is our, our ILs, our secondary instructional leaders and the work they do with our staff 612. We have, because of that work, we've got so many different opportunities to measure progress for our students. And they've been doing that all along. It's significant that we can't be face-to-face with the kids at this time and going back to March 13th. But the knowledge that we have, the data that we have is there. And those discussions can go on between those teachers. So the, the work that's happening now online and what we can, what we assess in terms of what the kids are doing is going to be shared 612. And I think, I think that goes right along with what Julia was saying. As we share that from eighth grade to ninth, then we know the baseline or we have a sense of the baseline that we're moving the kids from once, once they reach ninth grade. It's going to be the role of the teachers at every level to take the kids from where they are at that point and move forward. I think we're, I think we're in a place where we can, where we can make that happen.
Jack, what is 612? Because I've heard that a couple of times now. I don't know what 612 is.
The, our instructional leaders and the way that we discuss, look at work within our curriculum is, is in the range of grades six through 12. If we go back prior to the inception of the instructional leaders in their current role, we were operating much more, in a much more segregated vein. We were, we were operating as a, as a middle school grades six through 12 and then making a point of creating those transition conversations to a degree, I don't want to use the term artificially, that's a little too negative, but to a degree artificially. Now that, those conversations take place regularly from, through sixth grade through 12th grade staff, whether it's about curriculum, whether it's about student progress, whether it's about expectations. And that's a, that's fantastic that we have that because we can really lean on that now as one of our strengths to be able to create, you know, the platform that these kids will be able to be successful from regardless of where they are as we move them forward.
Whether they're in sixth grade or, or in high school, we feel that this, this is, that that transition is covered by that, that model, right? Moving them from the eighth grade, middle school into high school, that this model covers that and we're confident in that.
Yes, I am.
I could talk for a second. Kevin Welch, math instructional leader. What I, just to talk from a math standpoint, what I did was I created a, a six through 12 curriculum document that I sent out to all my teachers. And what I wanted to do is take a look at three different parts of it. One, what did you cover before we went home March 13th? What are you now covering in our distance learning plan? And then what topics you might possibly not get to due to just, you know, the curriculum slowing down or not being able to get it because then the discussions we're going to have, and this could be over some of the PD days or during our department meetings, about what can we cover the next year? So teachers are going to talk with teachers from sixth to seventh, seventh to eighth, eighth to ninth, and then throughout the high school so that if there's these power standards that we really make sure that they need to be covered are picked up in some form over the next year's course and hoping we can embed that within the next set of classes in order to make sure we can catch up on anything that the students have missed during the time that we're home.
Okay, yeah, so, so my only concern with, with hearing six through 12 is that that's a long span, right? And so we want to make, just want to make sure that we have that covered. You know, that, those two transition points. This, the sixth grade, eighth grade to high school, and then high school to college, that we have all that covered.
Yes. Thank you. We will go on. I will say Christine Casalia got kicked off and has been texting me because she is trying to get back on, but the system is not currently letting her. But she did say she does not have any questions. I just want to make one comment before we move on, and Jerry, you're next, just so you know. You know, I wish the state commissioner of education would have just come out with one decision for the entire state on this is the way we're handling the fourth quarter grading instead of 169 different boards of education now scrambling and trying to figure out what we're going to do, which can be vastly different from every other of the 169. It would have just been so much easier if he had just said, this is what's going on, and everybody would have just followed that. It's just kind of disappointing, I think, that now we're spending all this time trying to, you know, figure this out and scramble, so to speak. I mean, we have enough going on with distance learning and trying to get all the kids doing. We don't need the disruption of trying to scramble to figure out grading for fourth quarter. Jerry, you are up.
You know what? I am all set. I, I know us very well and I know what we, what we will do. And I think after hearing everyone, if we just understand where Jake was coming from and the way Joe explained it, yeah, I know there's all kinds of anxiety out there, but at the end, this is an anomaly and we're just kind of, I hate to say, we're going to move along with it. I'm all set.
Great, thank you. Nick, you're up.
Yeah, just a quick, a couple of quick things. First of all, I'm going to be saying extra prayers for our first-year teachers who are coming in in August, September because it's going to be a very interesting cohort. But this is actually a really fascinating conversation. And we've been having this conversation in higher ed the last couple of weeks. So at Fairfield, we originally instructors were given the option to move their entire course to pass fail. And very quickly, the same day, when I say quickly, I mean the same day, that there were a lot of science students who revolted because, I guess, and I don't know this for a fact, but I guess that there's a med school requirement that if you apply to med school, you have to have a certain grade in like intro bio, intro chem. And so if a bio professor moved her courses to pass fail, and if you're applying to med school and you took bio spring 2019 and you got a B, and you're taking bio spring 2020 and you got to pass, they're not equivalent. So what we're doing is, and I don't know if this is an option here, I know, you know, post-secondary and secondary are very different. But what we've decided to do is let the students opt in to pass fail. So all the instructors are putting in letter grades into, as our final grades. And if a student opts in to pass fail, an A, B, C, or D is mapped to a pass. And then a fail is mapped to a fail. And if the student opts in, then that can be, then that, the student can be pass fail. But they won't see the letter grade. They'll see the pass if they got A, B, C, or D. And those who opted to have a letter grade would see the A, B, C, or D. That was one thing. The other thing too, and I can't remember what state I saw this in. I read it today on some national education news, something. So they're giving out two grades. They're giving, they're giving like basically a checkmark for completion of assignments, which is weighted a certain way. And then they're giving a grade for assessment of the assignment and they're blending them together. So if you complete the assignment, then that goes to Jeff's point of engagement. There's, there, you're getting credit for completing, but then there's also a credit for assessment. And then those are being blended together. So that's just another option. I have full faith in our Massey team, in our central office team about how to go about this. I, I am very ever so slightly concerned. I know we keep talking about colleges and all the Connecticut colleges are on board. And as Joe said, I mean, this is nationwide. It's not a Connecticut thing. I'm thinking about scholarships and grants though, as well. A lot of our juniors and seniors, I know when I was in high school, I tried to look for scholarships and grants. And a lot of those are cumulative GPAs. And, you know, if, if an A student or a B student has an A or a B in the first, second, or third quarter, you know, what's the probability you're going to have a C or D student who the fourth quarter is going to come along and say, oh, I was going to get a 97 and now you took that opportunity away from me? I don't, I think the probability is very low there, but I think to Jeff, Jeff's point is a really good one about engagement. And so those are just two other, two other alternatives. One from higher ed, which might not be applicable, but another one from secondary. And, but as Jerry said, I think that, you know, we're going to move past this. And I think what our team decides is going to be the best way forward. So no real question, but thank you for the time.
Joe, did you want to, did you, did you want to talk or say anything? I think, I don't know if you guys covered what Nick's point is. I know it's more college, but I think you guys did discuss something where opting in or out of that whole grade and/or pass fail.
Yeah, and there was, you know, and that's why I said, this is a, this is a dialogue tonight. You know, this was, that was definitely, that is definitely one of the options being thrown around out there. Some districts are, are doing that, you know, what I call the kind of a hybrid or a choice model, where they're doing pass fail or, or a grade. And basically, the deadline seems to be somewhere around Memorial Day where kids have to make a decision, hey, I'm going to take this class pass fail. They continue to get, they continue to get assignments graded numerically, then they take it pass fail or or for the, for the grade. But that was the purpose of tonight. I mean, we've been, we've been wrestling with this. We've gone a million different ways with it over the past, over the past week and a half, two weeks. And I wanted to get feedback from folks here. So I don't think, and again, I'll go back, I don't think we're going to do, the whole concept here is do no harm. And I don't think whatever decision we decide is going to cause any harm. Once again, everybody knows that we're all in the same boat going into this. Unfortunately, we're all in the same different boat all over the state, all over the country, but.
But you know, Nick, your comments make me really want to make sure that we revisit the discussion of pass with distinction. You know, and then also get to Jeff's point, Jeff's point about engagement. Because we, you know, we could find a way to report the fourth quarter performance as pass with distinction versus pass versus incomplete. I think teachers would be, from a grade reporting perspective, teachers would be tracking grades in a way to map them to a pass with distinction or pass. By continuing the traditional grading all the way to the end, we, we put forth the traditional grades as if it is the same as what fourth quarter would have been. And I think part of where we're coming from, from our heart about the pass fail is to just mutually acknowledge as a community that we have stepped off into something different. And we are, we are, we have asked our teachers to redesign and deliver the essential learning for students. And, and we're not giving the same thing to all kids in a controlled environment that we would have been. And so I think, I think for us to make sure that we deal with engagement in a serious way as well as make sure that we're not going to, you know, lock off our least engaged students.
Right, and I think it's about, it's about engagement. And I think it's also about trying to capture the most. And I think that no matter what you pick, there's always going to be a small minority that is, is not captured. I really, I know it's post-secondary, but even for secondary, I really like the hybrid model. I think the problem there is going to be the backend, like the logistics of like Power School and like mapping things and, and trying to come up with a system where students can opt in and out and tracking that and making sure it's legal and making sure it's all that stuff. But in theory, I like that the best, but I do understand that we're in a different place, which calls for, you know, there are different types of assessments. So the way you assess is different. And so the, the way that you evaluate that assessment is different. So, yeah, it is.
You know, I love the idea of trying to figure that all out with Google Forms and all the algorithms and all that stuff. That would be very exciting. Where I felt a little uncomfortable was in terms of putting kids forth to colleges to say, this kid's transcript reflects their quarter four performance. This kid's weighted GPA ended at quarter three. And wanting our grade reporting to be really transparent and to be able to give Ann the information that she could put on a school profile to say, this is what our kids did for quarter four, so that colleges would transparently understand that. Instead of having kids cherry pick and then, you know, it becomes a false choice. If I'm a smarty pants and I have all As, but I have a P for chemistry, then did that just become a de facto of C minus? You know, and then would that kid not really feel like they had that choice because of what it would be saying to have a nixie transcript like that? And the social emotional benefits of the pass, even, even pass with distinction are so great. We wouldn't want to undercut it with just, once again, putting our kids back on that hamster wheel when now they're facing some uneven obstacles.
Right, and I just want to make sure that we're also capturing other things. I don't know really, but what the high school transcript is used for other than, you know, colleges and scholarships and grants. Like I said, I just want to make sure that we're kind of trying to cover as many bases as we can that the decision that we make is covering all those bases. But I totally understand what you're saying and I agree.
Donna, it's Jake from the high school. I just wanted to make one quick comment if it's all right to respond back to Nick too. I really, I just wanted, I appreciate that Kevin spoke up to talk about the math department because I want to be sure that we don't just kind of slide by what Kevin was trying to show us was that, you know, we're not going to cover the same amount of material in quarter four that we normally would have. And we're not going to be able to assess that material the exact same way that we would have. And so, you know, to assign a traditional grade to that quarter as if it was any other quarter, to me, doesn't seem like it is fair to our, our highest achieving students either because this material we're not going to get to, that we're going to be reteaching, retooling. Some material we're not going to get to, some material we're going to have to reteach the following year. Some material, we're going to do our best and hope that we assessed it this year properly and kids know it. And so all of that put together, I think makes it a really challenging to use a traditional grading system to grade the work. And I think that going to a pass fail version of that with pass with distinction, both honors, you know, our highest achieving kids, but also really liberates the teachers to be able to be very, very responsive to what the kids are doing. If, if kids are, you know, moving ahead in the curriculum quickly, for whatever reason, then they're able to kind of, you know, pick up the pace and be responsive to those kids in front of them every single day. And so I just think it's, you know, I really appreciate Kevin speaking up because I had forgotten to bring up that point of, you know, that these folks are working really hard to keep these spreadsheets of, this is the material we're going to get through. This is what we're confident we got through. This is what we're confident we need to reteach next year. And when you started looking at going past, we're not even sure of what we're getting through, let alone then assessing it and then having faith in that assessment on the backend. I just feel like if, if we could break out of the, it's hard because we're all used to traditional grades, but if we could kind of move away from it and just say, as Joe said a couple of times, it's an anomaly and this is the, we believe, we believe the best way to service our kids right now. I do think it's going to be, it will be for the better. And I was glad when Yukon put the email out to us saying that, you know, most schools are moving to pass fail for quarter four. Because I think that really made us, made us feel good that, you know, we, we feel like we're on the right track with our, with our plan. More investigation, but we feel we're on the right track.
Thank you so much, Jake. Alan, I think we are up to you.
No, I totally agree with what Jake is saying. There's, you know, with regards to traditional grading, there's way too many variables associated with this. Too many confounding variables. It's not a controlled classroom and, you know, this whole Zoom thing and is pretty much, you know, the Google Classroom and the Zoom meetings and that sort of thing is just too new to, you know, base a numerical grade on. I think, I think Jake and Joe are on the right track with this.
Great, thank you so much, Alan. Dave, I think you're the last one.
Thank you. Agree with Alan. Obviously, there's a lot of concerns, but I believe everyone has the kids' best interest at heart. And if this is what our professionals are advising us, that we go to a pass fail, then I think as a board, that's what we do.
Great, thank you. Does any of the other board members have anything else before Joe goes on? Because we are still in superintendent. All right, hearing none, Joe, continue on.
Oh, and I appreciate it. Listen, that was a long, that was a long conversation, but I really, you know, we appreciate the feedback. You know, I know we just talked about it for about an hour, but, you know, we've been wrestling with this for weeks and literally looking at every school and trying to figure out, okay, which is right for one school isn't necessarily right for another. okay, which is right for one school isn't necessarily right for another school or another community. So, um, you know, I just want to know how painful, um, it's been for us as well. So, so I really do, I really wanted to facilitate conversation and make sure that we were all clear where we were. Uh, I'll try to go quick with the rest of my report. The second thing I wanted to talk about was the lunch program. I just wanted to thank our partners so far, Sedexo, manager Horacio Coito and his workers have been awesome, as well as, uh, the Monroe Social Services Department, Carrie Swift and her team of volunteers, many of whom are our students, who are delivering meals to families that aren't able to pick them up. I know Mark Schwartz was over there today putting signage up and, uh, doing some other work as well. And I thank all of them for this, uh, for the work they've done so far. When we started the program, I believe we had about 80 or 90 students who participated that first week. This number has gradually ticked up every week and we're, uh, we're averaging about 140 lunches per day right before the break. This week's talent has increased a little more and, you know, I can only imagine this is, this is the trend that we're going to continue to see. Uh, it increased a little bit more. It looks like we'll be providing meals for about 150 students this week. Uh, we've also moved from providing lunch only to now including lunch and breakfast. And the new program works like this. Uh, for example, today, parents picked up today's lunch and tomorrow's breakfast. Tomorrow they'll pick up tomorrow's lunch and Wednesday's breakfast and so on and so forth. On Friday, they'll pick up Friday's lunch and technically Monday's, uh, breakfast. But I imagine, you know, that'll become Saturday's breakfast. We've made some, some changes for the health and safety of our, of our workers, as well as the families who are participating in the program, um, you know, based on the discovery of increasing, uh, executive order. You know, we've added some proactive measures, um, you know, asking people to wear gloves and a face mask or a face covering, whatever, when picking up their meals. Uh, Mark was there today and putting cones out, designating the, uh, social distancing space, putting arrows so we have people coming in one direction, out another direction. They don't have to pass by each other. Uh, so the, the program's going really well. As I said before, uh, you know, some of the, you know, unexpected costs, I want to be as transparent as possible about the program. Um, after a few weeks in the program, I talked to Alan Dean at Sedexo and, you know, he, he estimated we're looking at about $1,800 a week to run the program. You know, and those costs are, are pretty fixed and they pretty much consist of the labor, the folks working there, uh, material and obviously, uh, the food. Uh, the, the program is actually built on scale. So the more meals we do, the more reimbursement will be eligible for. So in fact, this is part of the reason for moving to the breakfast program. Uh, you know, in addition to providing the basic needs of many students, um, by giving them breakfast, we actually receive an additional reimbursement for serving both breakfast and lunch. So, you know, that decision was kind of a no brainer for us. It was kind of a win-win. So, uh, you know, by adding breakfast, we actually increased the reimbursement that we, um, that we have coming back to us.
Joe, I think that makes sense. Uh, can you just clarify, are we, uh, covering the weekend as well as the weekday or no?
No, we're just covering, uh, Monday through Friday. Um, like I said, the only, the only exception might be on Friday, if you pick up Friday's lunch, you technically get Monday's breakfast, but I'm sure it's probably being eaten on Saturday morning.
Okay.
So just, so just so that everybody is understanding, this is a cost to the board by providing this. We are getting reimbursement, but the board is covering the cost, which is a little different than the way the regular, um, school lunch program works, which we don't, you know? That is really being paid for by the families. But in this case, you know, I would say the majority of our families who are receiving this are not only are free and reduced, but a lot of our families who are now in need. So by increasing the meals, it actually lowers our costs because as Joe mentioned, um, we are getting a higher reimbursement. So, um, our costs are not going to go up, even though we're providing now breakfast, they're actually going to go down. Um, George, do you have any other questions on this?
I don't. Thanks, Donna. Thanks, Joe.
Thank you. Jeff?
Uh, no, no questions.
Thank you. Shannon?
No questions.
Uh, Jerry?
Nope. All set.
Nick?
Nope. Great work. Thank you.
Alan?
All set.
Uh, Dave?
No.
And Christine, did you get back on?
I'm back on. Uh, no questions.
Okay, thank you. So we will move on. Joe?
Uh, I just wanted to talk about the bus contracts. So we have five different companies that we're working with to create amendments to our current transportation contracts. All Star, VIP, Ed-Advance, CTS and CES. Um, we've come to an agreement already with VIP and Ed-Advance. All those other ones besides All Star, um, just do, um, special education transportation for us. So we've come to an agreement with two of them already, VIP and Ed-Advance. And we're really close to settling with, um, with All Star, which is by far our largest transportation contract. Uh, we're negotiating our base contract with them. That's for the three tiers of buses, uh, the three tiers of runs. They provide every day with their fleet of 29 buses with drivers and monitors. Uh, we've asked for and received backup information for a lot of their figures, a lot of the figures that they arrive at, um, especially for wages, which is the majority of the expense. Uh, when all is said and done, it looks like we will owe them approximately 65% of the remaining payments for our transportation. So I know people have been looking for some figures here. So we currently have approximately $596,000 encumbered for transportation for the remainder of the year. The new bill, which provides a credit for the time without drivers from March 13th to today, and includes the reemployment of those drivers starting today, would be $393,000. So we're looking at a cost avoidance of about a little over $200,000 just in the All Star contract. Ron and I were just doing some rough numbers today. We, uh, we still have to finalize this. But with the other contracts, we are anticipating a savings of, uh, somewhere in the area of just transportation I'm talking about. So between all our transportation contracts, we're looking at a possible anticipated savings of about $300,000 to base transportation.
Joe, yeah, I just wanted to add that, that, uh, All Star savings was just on the base contract. So that 596 that's encumbered is just on their base contract.
Yep. Um, the, the question I have is, uh, and please open up our conversation. Because this was a contract, uh, I'm not sure if this, uh, if there's, if we need to vote on this or if you just want to authorize Ron and I to amend this year's contract. Not sure exactly how we want to proceed with that.
Thank you. Ron, can I just ask a question? So that's the base contract. So we would, did we also encumber expenses, um, for, um, field trips for sports events that we are also saving? That was to you, Ron?
Yes, that, that, that would be correct, Donna.
Okay. And do we know about roughly what that is or we don't?
Not yet. And the, the, the part that's tricky with that, not that tricky with it, but, um, some of the field trips, the price, the price of the field trip, we also lose revenue in some of these things. So for example, some of those field trips, the price of the, the price of the transportation is built into the, the, uh, the price to go on the field trip. Uh, additionally, um, you know, for the, for the athletic, um, transportation, we're not collecting any, we're not collecting any surcharges. So that money would have offset the, uh, would have offset some of the transportation, um, expenses anyway.
Thank you. Thank you for answering that.
Yeah, I, I anticipate that number is going to be higher than 300. I just, uh, and that, and that's one of the things, um, if I could just jump ahead real quick. One of the things the Board of Finance has asked for, for Thursday is for us to go, you know, they're, they're trying to come up with where that fund balance is going to be as of June 30 of fiscal year 20. So we're, you know, a big part of that is, is where is Board of Ed going to fall out? So that, um, right now I'm, we're comfortable giving that. I mean, the contract's not negotiated yet, but, um, it's, it's probably that savings is going to be north of that number. I'm comfortable saying that.
Great. Thank you. George, you're up first on, um, questions. And if you want a formal vote or you just want to authorize and say Ron and Joe can take care of this.
I think, I think, uh, your question, Ron's clarification was very helpful. But Ron's last point about, uh, a part of the, the piece of the, the Board of Finance that's, uh, Board of Ed, where, what are our levers to give them, I guess, is, is my question? And that's for Ron.
So George, I'm not really understanding your question.
So when you said, when you said that we're going to be, you're going to be meeting with them and a big piece of it is going to be where does the Board of Ed fit with, within that? Uh, what are the levers that we're going to, are they going to try to pull from us to be able to, to get?
So what we're, you know, assuming, um, the All Star contract gets finalized, I'll have hard numbers to work from, from there. And we're all, we're also going to, um, so at, at that point, um, we're going to go through and basically look to liquidate POs. Or if we can't liquidate them at this point, at least make an educated guess on how it's going to, um, roll out for the rest of the year. Because what we have to, we have to fine tune the deficit number, obviously. I'm confident that number is going to be at or within the 700,000 that the first selectman, um, promised us, um, that he would, uh, um, appropriate to the board for the deficit. I was concerned a month ago that that wouldn't happen. The, that our, our deficit will probably be less than the 700,000. I'm comfortable saying that. At this point, I'm not comfortable, comfortable giving you an exact number, if that makes sense, until, until we have a chance to go through and close the POs, which will be happening, um, over the next, uh, 48 hours or so. Under the assumption, we're going to do it, let me clarify something, we're going to do it under two assumptions. Assumption one is, is that the school, that we don't come back for the school year. Assumption two, the Board of Finance wanted was that we will be returning on May 21st. And the way we're going to do that is I'm going to pull everything out and then I'll just add back pieces that, um, um, we likely would not save on if we went back on, uh, May 21st.
So you're going to come up with two different scenarios?
Correct.
Okay. All right.
And I think part of this exercise in practice, Ron, is they're looking at a, a stronger, um, estimate of where we're going to end up to see, is the whole entire 700 going to be utilized as part of this special appreciation? And if it's not, how much of it is not, that would go then back to the undesignated fund balance? And that's what they're trying to figure out, what that undesignated fund balance is going to end up at, uh, June 30th, 2020, so that they kind of know where, what they really do have in there to pull out for next year's budget, correct?
That, that's correct, Donna. And obviously, um, the Board of Ed deficit is a part of that. We also have to project out revenues through the end of the fiscal year, um, and townsite expenditures as well. So it's, uh, um, and that all rolls into whether it's an overall deficit or surplus and how it will affect fund balance. And, um, so to, Joe had mentioned, you know, what is the fund balance? As of the beginning of this fiscal year, it was actually $13 million. In the current fiscal year budget, um, it, assigned fund balance is projected to be used of about 2.3 million of assigned fund balance will be used. Whether that all gets used or not, that's why we're, uh, we need to do the roll forward. So.
Great. Thank you. George, do you have any other questions?
Thanks, Donna. Very good. Thanks.
Shannon?
No questions.
Jeff?
No questions.
Jerry?
No questions.
Nick?
Yeah, I guess the only thing which, um, and Ron kind of answered it already. I, you know, I, I, my only big concern at this point for the current fiscal year, I know you guys are doing a lot of work on the transportation contracts, is where we're going to end up with our deficit. And so I think Ron addressed, um, most of those. And I'm hoping by, by next board meeting, um, if we're going to go through the POs and, and the transportation negotiations over the next week or so, that we'll have a little bit more of a firm number. I know the Board of Finance is going to want that too, because they were trying to vote on a budget, um, for May 14th. So, um, the only question I had for Joe and possibly Darlene was, are, I don't know if there was, I don't see it on the agenda, but were we going to do any sped updates? Or I don't know if there's anything, um, I don't mean to throw you off, Donna, but that could be for later. I just didn't see it on the agenda.
It's on the, uh, I think we're doing it at the first meeting of every month, correct, Darlene? Yeah. You're muted.
Yeah, sorry. We had planned for the first meeting of every month for updates.
I didn't hear any budget impacts with the distance learning that were, um, material to the budget discussions. That was my only, that was the only thing.
Unfortunately, we won't, we won't know until we know if we're going to be back to school. We had a conversation today just about, um, you know, our, our extended school year program and how, how that's going to be impacted with, um, COVID-19. We don't know if it will, Ron, if, um, you know, and so there are, there are a lot of questions surrounding that. Tracy and I did, um, look at a lot of numbers today for, um, special ed and, and we're trying to do the same thing, you know, what Ron asked to do, to look at POs and to figure out, you know, is there going to be, um, savings in any of those areas? Or are we going to, um, spend all of that money down? So we'll, we will have a firmer number coming up.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you all.
Thanks. And I'll just go back to the Board of Finance, not the Board of Finance, I'm sorry. Our finance department at Central Office is extremely busy this week. As mentioned, they're not only making all the changes in, for next year's budget to get more accurate numbers there, but they're also going forth and starting to close POs, trying to firm up numbers. So I would imagine, Ron, correct me if I'm wrong, some of that you'll have by Thursday. The rest you'll probably have for the following week. But definitely I would say by our meeting at the beginning of May, we should be fully firm with all the work that, that the finance department is doing this week and next week.
Yeah, we'll, we'll have, uh, by the, certainly by the next board meeting. I, I anticipate having a pretty tight number for Board of Finance for Thursday. Um, they're, they're going to need it to make their decision. Not, not that it can't get fine tuned over the next week or two. Obviously, um, you know, hopefully we'll have some clarity on the remainder of the school year over the next couple of weeks, which will help us move in a, that direction. But yeah, I, I think, I think I'll have a pretty tight number by the end of this week, actually, Donna. With, with the two assumptions there.
Okay, great. Thank you. Do you have anything else?
Nope. I'm all set. Thank you so much.
All right, Alan?
Uh, no questions. It sounds like, uh, Ron and, uh, Joe are doing a great job with this.
Yep. Christine?
No questions.
And finally, David?
Thank you, Donna. Um, I understand that we have to pay our contracts for the governor's executive orders. I know we're saving on diesel and a lot of those field trips. Um, and I would say to, um, authorize Joe and Ron to finish those discussions and just give us an update next meeting or email.
Thank you, David. Ron, is talking about diesel and heating fuel. Um, is there any update on those contracts? Because, um, just to refresh everybody's memory, the vendor wanted to liquidate those contracts and have us pay them now.
So that there actually is no update. Um, the town side was getting the same, uh, I think we, did we discuss this at the last meeting? I think we did, right? That the, the town side was, you know, got the same, um, hate to call it threats, but that's almost what it was. And, and, um, the town attorney addressed the issue with the, um, uh, energy company and we have not heard back since. So they haven't followed, you know, they didn't, they haven't sent us, uh, back since. So they haven't followed, you know, they didn't, they haven't sent us any bills for the liquidation of the contract. So I assume that's on hold. If I hear anything new, I'll, you know, certainly let Joe and you all know.
Thank you. Thank you. Joe, you are still on.
All right, very, very quickly, the calendar committee, you know, not the best of scenarios, but we're going to need to do some kind of a virtual calendar committee. So Jack Cecchini will be setting something up within the next few weeks or so with all of the union presidents, as well as, I believe it was Jerry and Alan that were on the calendar committee. So we'll get that, we'll get that going. So we can bring a 21, 22 calendar to the Board for approval, as well as a possible modification to the 2021 calendar. Just to give you the heads-up, one of the things that Jeff and I have been talking about is moving, right now, this past year, we did two PD days. We did the PD day and then convocation. And that was scheduled for 2021 as well. And I think we all agree, especially after being out, but likely might be, especially throughout the remainder of the year, to have three PD days, you know, like we traditionally have had in the past for 2021. So having those three days in the beginning of the year, with the third day being convocation. So more to come, Jack will send out, Jack will send out, Jack will send out an invite for that.
All right. Thank you. Joe, anything else?
No, the last thing was the finance update. I think Ron, I think Ron hit it. Ron and I keep talking, and we keep saying we're going to want to under-promise and over it. So hopefully, we're trying to be certain numbers. But, you know, as we talked about, there's definitely, you know, there's a few, you know, but in terms of some areas, some expectations could be a big, obviously, some other areas, obviously, like I said before, not calling out the dues. We had a very good year in terms of snow. So snow removal is trending, obviously, very well, knock on wood. And custodial overtime, obviously, with nobody in, you know, we're not racking up any overtime. So there's some pretty significant areas there. Like Ron said, you know, we want to get as far below that 700,000 number as possible, knowing that that's the money that we're going to be tapping into for next year anyway, in the assigned fund balance. That's all I had, Donna.
Great. Thank you so much. Does any board members, instead of going one by one, if you just unmute yourself, if you have any other questions for Joe, and just say who you are? All right. Then we will move on to old business. Item A is the new course that we discussed last time, which is Spanish 1A and 1B that leaves to Peterson, presented to us. Do I have a motion to approve the new course as presented, those two new courses as presented?
Aye.
Jerry? Thank you, Jeff, as a second. We'll go around, and I'll just do discussion. George?
No.
Jeff?
No discussion.
Sorry, Christine?
No questions.
Jerry?
All set.
Nick?
No questions.
Alan?
No questions.
And David?
No, I'm all for it.
And Shannon?
No questions. I'm all for it, too.
All right. So all in favor, George?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Shannon?
Aye.
Christine?
Aye.
Jerry?
Aye.
Nick?
Aye.
Alan?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
And I'm aye. So motion passes. We will move on to new business, and up first is the approval of the proposed 202021 Board of Education meeting dates with a vote anticipated. Do I have a motion to approve the proposed dates as presented?
Shannon? Hopefully in person.
Second, Jeff, any discussion on this? George, sorry, I'm losing track.
Only discussion is where Shannon calling from that she's behind, she's in front of pine trees or palm trees.
Thank you for the compliment. I just tonight learned the technical skill of how to make a background. Nowhere is near a palm tree. I'm just pretending I am.
Jeff?
No discussion.
Shannon? Any discussion?
No discussion.
Christine?
No discussion.
Jerry?
No discussion.
Nick?
The only question, we're, that Monday to December 21st, we're still in school, right? That's, that's too early for us to be on break. Yeah. No, I'm all good.
Alan?
All set.
And David?
No, looks good.
All right. So all in favor of approving the proposed 202021 on Board of Ed dates as presented, George?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Shannon?
Aye.
Christine?
Aye.
And Jerry?
Aye.
Nick?
Aye.
Alan?
Aye.
And David?
Aye.
Okay, great. Is there anything else by anybody before we move on to adjournment? Did we cover everything, or anybody have any other questions on anything else?
Donna, it's Dave?
Yes.
Just one quick thing for Joe. Just a reminder, we have a principal's position to fill, so we need to get that committee going.
Thank you very much, Dave. Yep, we were talking about it today. We got the position posted and get a committee going. Thank you.
Yeah, I know you don't need anything else to do, but I'm just looking at the calendar. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
And one more, Ron, the pension committee is for, has been moved to next week, correct?
Yeah, Nick, actually, yes, it's, the pension committee, right now, it's, looks like it's going to be Tuesday of next week. That's not confirmed yet. And I think, one thing I did mention, meant to mention earlier, there is, the Board of Finance Budget Workshop is at 6 o'clock on Thursday, and there is a public hearing at 7:00.
Thank you, man. I appreciate it. And there is, they use meetings to go, so it's a little different, but almost pretty similar to this. Does anybody have anything else?
George? Yeah, just one quick thing, Donna. Joe, can you assign somebody to be the moderator for the, for the policy committee? I don't want to burden you with that right now. So if you can put somebody else in charge of that, that would be great.
Thanks, George. Yeah, I've actually been working with Jack Cecchini on that. Jack was going to, Jack was going to do that. John, please actually help us out. Thank you, George. I appreciate that.
Great. Thanks.
And the principal committee would be very challenging right now with, we can't meet in person, we can't interview in person. I'm not exactly sure how that could actually work right now.
I think we'd probably have to use Zoom, I would think. But I don't know. That's a good, that's a good question. But I think we still have to move forward because we're going to need to have somebody in place, you know, at the start of the year. But that's a good question. I mean, I don't have a good answer. Maybe Joe has a good answer on that.
How do they typically handle, you know, interviews when you guys have a pandemic and a quarantine?
Most normal pandemic. We'll have to make the best of it.
Yeah, I think we're just going to have to try the best we can and see what happens. You know, I don't think that's a great answer.
No, I know. Some things, I agree, Donna, it's not a great answer. And I know we need to think about it and everything, but it's just, it's not, and I don't think it would have the same effect over Zoom that it could have in face-to-face, and we can't do it right now. So I'm not, I don't know what the answer is, but I'm just saying.
Yeah, I don't know the answer either.
Well, it's not the type of position we could put on hold for much longer, because all the, yeah, because all the candidates are going to be picked over pretty quickly.
Yeah.
I agree with Alan.
Yeah. I think we're just going to have to move forward the best we can in this situation to try to find somebody.
I'll get the position posted, and I'll look at our hiring guide and get a committee together and start going.
All right. Thanks, Joe. Shannon, anything else?
No. Thank you, Donna, for doing a good job running, just made a great job running these two meetings here on a whole new platform. And Joe, thanks to everybody. I really mean that. You're doing a great job. Thank you.
Thanks, Shannon. It's really, everyone has been, has been working around the clock. I appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you. Christine, anything from you?
Nope. All good.
Jerry?
Nope. All set. Thank you all.
Nick?
A great meeting, as usual. I really enjoyed the grading discussion. I think that was really fascinating stuff. Good job to the high school team. You know, we're all just trying to get through in such unpredictable times. Thank you.
Agreed. Alan?
All set.
And David?
No, I'll yield to Jerry for his favorite motion.
Oh, sure. Motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Suck it.
Great. Thank you. All in favor, George?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Shannon?
Aye.
Christine?
Aye.
Jerry?
Aye.
Nick?
Aye.
Alan?
Aye.
And David?
Aye. Good night, everybody.
Great. Thank you. Motion is, meeting is adjourned.